I'll call the Newport Beach City Council Study Session for June 9, 2009 to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that council members Rozansky and Webb are absent.
Okay, first item on the agenda is clarification of items on consent calendar. Councilwoman Daigle?
None.
Councilwoman Gardner?
I have a slew. Number 10, I know this is last time before, that with all the talk we have, we've got Oasis in at lower budgets, and yet so many of these little agreements, they're coming in at higher costs. Are we not seeing any reflection in this kind of thing in our hourly costs, that we're having increases in such tough times?
Steve, that's on geotechnical contracts.
You know, I don't know if the, we're not really seeing a huge reduction in professional services hourly rates. You know, we haven't seen a lot of that.
It's more the construction?
Yeah, because the real savings in this economy are really material prices, and the material prices are dropping substantially. But labor seems to either stay at the same or slightly increase.
That seems unusual. We've got a nine-point-something employment rate. Okay, that was one question. Number 13, we're asking for $80,000, and I didn't, if you would explain to me in an email how we got that, because I'm getting different numbers, and I know I must not be reading it, so we need to take time, but I would like something from there. And then on 16, which was the banners, the annual encroachment thing is for the banners in Corona Del Mar on Christmas. That's it. So we have to do it annually?
That is, but it doesn't need to come to the city council annually. It can be renewed by staff.
Just by staff. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Hen?
Two things just quickly. With regard to the various bids that were being asked to renew today, I just wanted to check my understanding and reading through the staff reports. It looks like the three Village bids, Marine Avenue, Balboa Village, and Corona Del Mar, were asking for a few thousand dollars more than actual prior year, and that the final information that we got from the Restaurant Association was asking for roughly $25,000 more than what they actually got last year. Can I just confirm that that's the correct understanding?
My understanding as far as the Restaurant Association is concerned, I'm not sure about the other bids. And Councilman, we are, this is on consent, because there is going to be a public hearing at the next meeting where this is going to be talked about.
Well, it looks like we have the answer woman at the mic.
I guess we do.
With regard to the geographic bids, it's only Corona Del Mar that has a supplemental budget request for the Christmas walk, and that's an additional $5,000. But they are not asking for anything beyond what we have given them before in matching funds for their own assessment.
I should be more clear than, it's the matching bid, or the matching amount for the bids looked like a few thousand dollars more, not a supplemental request, but the matching amount that's being proposed.
It would go up only if their own assessment. No, I'm sorry, it doesn't. That amount remains the same. We have not changed that since its inception.
Well, it just looked like it was up, so maybe somebody can have a quick look at it for...
Is it the Christmas walk money coming from the chamber and not the bid request?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. But the Corona Del Mar bid did also submit a supplemental budget request for capital items that came through a month or two ago. I don't see it on the checklist, though.
Okay, I'm not familiar with that.
Would that have been the late things for the, something to do with the street?
That'd be a budget carryover, though, I would think. You sure they asked for new money?
I thought it was new. I know it got forwarded along.
Maybe get that clarified, too.
Okay, all right. This is my email.
Well, if we can get some clarity surrounding those questions for tonight or for next session, that's fine. I would just like to make sure we've got a clear picture of that. And then just a quick question, Steve, with regard to Agenda Item Number 11, the pavement rehabilitations project chart that's in here identifies the Balboa Boulevard pavement rehabilitation for Million One. I know what that is. That's 22nd Street to, I think, 46th Street, or something like that on Balboa Boulevard. But then right below that, it says Central Balboa Peninsula Pavement Rehab. What's that a reference to?
Those are the streets that are currently within the Underground District.
101?
101, yeah, 101. Some of them are concrete streets. These are streets that were, need to be replaced, although some of the money's in conjunction with the Assessment District.
So it's more than alleys, it's actual streets?
These are actual streets, yeah.
It's in conjunction with the undergrounding going on?
I'm going to correct some drainage problems as well.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
On item 17, the nominees to the boards and commissions, two are recommended for the Civil Service Board, Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Talbot. Mr. Talbot, apparently, by the paperwork in the book, applied for PBNR. First of all, is that accurate? Is he recommended for civil service? And is he going to be given an opportunity to put an essay in, I suppose, about why he would want to be on the Civil Service Board?
That was clarified. I think before we conducted the interviews, and it was clear that he was applying for Civil Service Board, even though he had evidence previously and interest in the other committee.
All right, did he write a little statement about that? Because that's not in here.
No, we just interviewed him.
Okay.
Okay, Councilwoman Webb, any clarifications, the consent calendar?
If Mr. Hen had kept me on the phone for so long, it would have been here sooner, but no, I have not.
And I duly apologize.
Mr. Mayor, can I just sort of ask, I appreciate Councilwoman Gardner's question on number 10 about professional services, and if I might also inquire, are we asking for any reductions? I know they're not bid, or there's no element of competition. We seem to rotate the vendors. I mean, what is our interaction with these vendors?
Yes, council, we do, you know, we do compare it to other industry rates, and one thing I missed, and I should have responded to Councilwoman Gardner, is that the last hourly rate setting was 2007. And while the 2009 is higher, it might have been much higher had the economy still been booming. So that they're, they have actually held their rates for two years. The fact that, you know, some salaries had gone up probably in the last year before the economic recession had hit. But we do, when we do interview these, we're supposed to select based on professional standards, on quality-based selection, according to the state laws. So when we hire these professional services, we generally check their hourly rates against known hourly rates of other companies. We have several contracts with several other geotechnical firms, and we find that these rates are very competitive.
Okay, any other clarifications? Okay, I have none. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the budget review. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will continue where we left off at our last study session, when we made it through Items. One, starting with the facilities financing plan, then we talked about the state potential borrowing of property tax revenues, talked about PERS rates for 1112, lower bay dredging, and the need for the water rate increase. That brings us to, today we're looking at several other items, traffic signalizations Phases 5, 6, and 8, looking at the big Corona Police Patrol, Park Patrol issue, talk about a police position, a custody officer position. Mark Harmon will talk about clean natural gas issues and trash truck purchases. We'll talk about a utility department reorganization, McFadden Square, Phase 2. Spend a little time talking about what we intend to do at Corona Del Mar Library Project, and Councilwoman Hen asked for some clarification on some budget numbers that we had, in particular with the fire department. So I think that will cover all of those that have been raised thus far. So we will get started and talk about traffic signalization Phases 5, 6, and 8. And we're talking about this because we've had some conversations over the last year, and I think at our city council priority-setting retreat, what would happen if council really wanted to, you know, front-load this thing and get through it as fast as we can? Of course, we're looking at doing Phases 3 and 4, I think, right now are under design, Dave, so you can bring us up to date on that. But then, there are some issues if we would want to add further phases at the same time, and we'll talk about that during this presentation.
Thank you. Yes, we wanted to talk a little bit more about our traffic synchronization, or modernization project, and just kind of answer some questions here. If you recall, are you familiar with this map we showed you originally when we kicked off? This was an eight-phase project originally envisioned, and the various phases are laid out there. Currently, we have completed Phase 1. Phase 1 was East Coast Highway through the Corona Del Mar, it was also MacArthur Boulevard. That phase also included putting in the new traffic management center, and also bringing on the new backbone software and hardware that runs that. In Phase 1, we had 22 intersections, and we included two closed-circuit television cameras. And this was completed and now up and running in March of this year, which was the original schedule we had proposed. We move forward again with Phase 2 and 3, that's Jamboree Road and Airport area that we're doing right now, 30 intersections. We added some closed-circuit TV cameras per council's direction on the last one we kicked off Phase 1, so we have 13 cameras involved in this. And this is just getting underway. We just awarded the contract, and then the next councilman, I believe, or the 23rd, will be bringing to you the equipment contract for this phase to buy all the controllers. So this is well underway, and that'll continue off into December. The question that we want to just make sure we're on the right track with council's direction is that this fiscal year's budget, we propose to do Phases 4 and 7. Those include basically Irvine Avenue, Dover, and Superior, and also the peninsula. And with 4 and 7, we generally complete all the major arterials, the backbone-heavy arterials in the city. There's 27 intersections in this phase, and it's a cost of 1.3 million. Our thought is on this coming up fiscal year is that we'll design and construct this in this fiscal year. With that, then we propose putting out Phases 5, 6, and 8 under fiscal year 10 and 11. Again, that's 2.2 million dollars. Those phases are identified there, 5, 6, and 8, are Newport Center, San Joaquin Hills, Pelican Road, San Miguel Road, et cetera. Now, the thought process behind this is that just mainly it's a funding issue. One, I don't know if we have, and I could say we don't have the 2.2 million now, to do all the work unless we go into the general fund or do some creative financing. Two, there's some opportunities with OCTA Measure M2. We do know there's some call-up projects coming on, and we do know that they have limited grants. For instance, on Phase 2 and 3, we got a grant for each one of those of $250,000. So we think we could be successful in grabbing a couple more grants each year. The talk on the streets with the OCTA staff has made me September, we'll see the next call of projects. I think I could probably get two grants out of that, 4 and 7 I'd apply for. And then, under the new Measure M2, there's a large component for signal synchronization and equipment modernization, and I think we might be able to get money for 5, 6, and 8. So the strategy lays it out on a workflow that we can actually process this level of work. We feel comfortable with that, also that we can provide some grant funding and help subsidize it. And any more aggressive schedule, we may end up paying a lot more for it and probably having to put some general fund into it. So we wanted to verify that with you, if that direction's appropriate. There is one other phase in there that we've talked about. It's Pacific Coast Highway, if we get the relinquishment done, and adding that into this. If that happens, we could add it in at any year, whenever we get the relinquishment, and we could add it to either, if it happened next year, it'd be a little tight, but the year after, we could put it in with Phase 5, 6, and 8. So looking kind of for council's acknowledgement, maybe comments on this direction.
Okay, Councilwoman Hen?
If we do get relinquishment of Coast Highway, how many signals is that? And am I correct in understanding those signals already have fiber optic cable in them?
I'm not aware that they have fiber optic cable. In fact, being Caltrans, I'm probably sure they're not. They're usually old, old controllers. And my guess is we'd have to completely change out the cabinets and controllers, because it wouldn't be compatible with ours, and we'd have to put fiber optic along the whole length.
So no less expensive than any other portion of this?
Yeah, and I'm not familiar enough to know how many signals. I got to think there's at least 12 to 20. That's quite a long stretch.
It's about 10.
And there's probably conduit there to do that. We just have to pull in the fiber optic cable and change out the controllers.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one question that I had with my limited understanding of this was asking Dave and Steve, well, what if we gave the design to a different firm on Phases 5, 6, and 8? Because I've always heard that, you know, if we want to design, say, three or four phases, it would go in sequence anyway, that they would design one phase and then build on to that one. And what I was told, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that that really doesn't make good sense, that it really makes a lot of sense for the firm that has done the design to continue doing the design, because they learned some lessons with Phase 1 in particular. So, Dave, if you could clarify, amplify on that.
We'd really encourage to probably stay with the same firm. They've done well on Phase 1, 2, and 3. Iteris is the firm we're using. They know the system, they put the original report together, and we'd probably get the best bang for a buck. Again, it's professional service, and we don't really bid that out on dollars. We bid it on qualifications. They're well qualified now with our system, and it makes sense to continue with them. Financially, I think we'd be well ahead. We wouldn't have a learning curve with a new firm to come on board there. That'd be where we'd want to be on that one.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Is there a, I don't want to call it a technological logic to it, I mean, we took some of our busiest areas and front-loaded them. But is there another logic as to why we are grouping these? Say, if we did get Mariners Mile, to me Mariners Mile is much more of a problem than Phase 6. But is there, perhaps there's a reason, engineering-wise, why we would still want to do Phase 6 in the order we're doing it, because of the way it connects with everything else? I don't know.
I think Phase 5, 6, and 8, really there isn't anything before. Again, those are the smaller arterials, I wouldn't call them the backstreets, but as compared to MacArthur and Jamboree, they're not as critical, and that might be a choice we come up with. We do get relinquishment. Maybe we put off 5, 6, and 8 a little further than we put that one right up front, because it is such an important element. 4 and 7 are pretty big streets, and that makes sense. We're already working up those areas. And on the Irvine Avenue job, we've added the fiber optic into the Coyotes contract, and we're moving ahead on those. So that makes sense to complete those now.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Councilwoman Daigle?
I have a question on the Newport Center. I mean, I would think, what are your thoughts as far as just from a purely engineering standpoint? Would that be a fairly easy one to do?
Yeah, I don't see too much, but, I don't know, Tony, do you see any big issues with the Newport Center? It's not such a difficult project as it is, again, it's just compared to a MacArthur, it makes sense to probably wait till then. Pulling it forward, it's just a workload issue. We are, we have a lot of things on our plate now, and we were really stressing our staff trying to get Phase 1 done and get that operational. We're still working out the bugs with the cameras, so I prefer not to bring that up for that reason. I think it'd be better left with the 6 and 8 there.
Okay. And then, what are the, what's the current thinking as far as the application of the system? When I visited the network over in Irvine, you know, they had all day someone watching the monitor and making adjustments, and kind of what I'm hearing is more of a special events applications. So this kind of money for just special events would be kind of a lot, and maybe in the future, we need to think about additional resources. But what are your thoughts as far as how this system's going to be applied?
You know, we've had some internal discussions on it as we started to learn on the system. I think Tony and his group have seen some really great benefits of having a live body on some of the situations. We mentioned San Miguel last time. We actually corrected some of the timing right there as we viewed it. I think as we get more cameras on board, we should explore that. We'll have some special event practice coming up here. Steve and I talked internally about as maybe we get some staff turnover eventually, maybe we change that back and even ask council for the ability to have someone work a longer shift, split shift, maybe cover the morning commute and afternoons. Saturday coverage, probably on a special event case, unless we see some real positive benefits, like in the summer, we'd want to explore that. But I think we're open to it, if budgets allow.
Councilwoman Webb, did you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, council, I think there's one other issue that would be a good time to bring up now in relation to not only this, but it is a funding issue, and that is that evidently the governor is looking at taking away about 75% of local government's gas tax money. And that looks like it has some traction, and that would devastate local government as far as doing street and road projects. So it may be, if that happens, and what I've heard in that conversation is that it may happen for several years. Evidently, the governor thinks that there is not a legal prohibition from doing that. And it could be that the legislature is going to vote on the governor's budget proposals by the end of this week. It's hard to say what's happening up there, but that has certainly been floated, and it looks like it is one of the strong options being considered.
So what would the dollar impact be to us, 75%?
It would be about $1 million a year. We get about $1.3 million in gas tax, 75% would be about $1 million. That's a real critical component to our pavement program and keeping up our condition of our pavement, particularly with our AD PCI benchmark we're looking at.
And remind me again, what are the funding sources for those two years?
We've been using traffic and circulation money on this, and I believe we have been filling it in with some gas tax to backfill that.
And Measure M, local turnback we've been using on.
And local turnback.
Which we'll get to in a minute.
We're running, well, we'd run a deficit. If they took money from us this year, we'd be, our balance in our gas tax funds with all the projects left would be about $130,000. If they went back, they even talked about going back a year, we'd be in a negative deficit. We'd owe them about $900,000.
Certainly could call into play our maintenance of effort also.
And I think a lot of cities are looking at this, and actually, we're rather fortunate, because we've always been very careful to only use gas tax for actual projects. And a lot of cities actually use their gas tax funds and their other, you know, Prop 42 monies to actually pay for staff. And so those cities are now talking about the possibility of having to lay off considerable numbers of employees that are funded under those programs. So we've been fortunate. While I think we could probably weather one year of gas tax loss by trying to move around some of our Measure M funds, but we'll definitely get behind. And I think in an upcoming study session, we plan to present to you our pavement management program, which will probably show that there's a considerable amount of money that needs to be regularly invested in our pavement system in order to maintain the level of pavement quality that we have today. So, you know, this whole gas tax takeaway potentially is a huge problem for not only us, but every city in the county, as well as the state.
If they went back a year, I mean, this is so outrageous, and I'm sure everybody else here is gritting his and her teeth. But it's bad enough they take it, but they would go back a year, and they would say to us, send us a check for $900,000? How does that work?
Oh, I don't think it would even be sending us a check. They would just take it off the top, because we get it from the state, that one cent, I guess, of the Because we get it from the state, that one cent, I guess, of the sales tax from gas.
Have we been monitoring what effects that the actions of the legislature could have on OCTA, which could then have an effect on the city?
You know, I don't think that we've done that because there's so many things talked about, but Measure M, I think, is safe from the state. I don't see how they can get to Measure M money because that was a vote of the people.
But talking about that, I was just at the Growth Management Area Eight, which to me, sounds like it should be out in Roswell, and this is flying saucers or something. But we had a brief presentation, and Don probably knows more about it than I do, on bus service, and they're looking at $500 million in cuts over the next couple of years. What they're starting off in September will be big cuts, but they'll see even further cuts. So that's something when we get later this evening that I think we need to talk about a little bit.
We already have some of that going, as you know. Measure M is a sales tax, and with sales tax down, we're also seeing our revenues down about 10%. I know OCTA was on the news today talking about reduction, a lot of bus routes and a lot of their cutbacks. So they're feeling that already, although, as Homer mentioned, it's not something a state can get to, but they do get us other ways because they know we have a supplemental fund like Measure M, so they do play with our gas tax and our other Prop 42s and things like that.
Okay.
That's all we have for you on this item.
All right.
If there are no further questions, we'll move on to the next one, which we've titled Big Corona Police Park Patrol. And Chief Klein is going to begin this presentation, and Laura Detwiler is going to conclude it. And when the chief had his budget review with me, we talked a little bit about what we were going to do in the summer as far as any police patrols, special police patrols at Big Corona. The chief said that he could not afford that with the other budget cuts, and I accepted that and supported that. But since that time, PBNR is making a recommendation to the city council, so we're going to try and give some of the background in order to define where we are right now. Chief?
I'm just going to kind of start with some background on Corona Mar, going back to 2007, to give some historical perspective on where we were, what we did, and where we're at now. And if you remember back in 2007, we had a study session at council, and there was a lot of concerns from the residents at CDM concerning the beach area at CDM as well as Ocean Boulevard. There was concerns about the illegal activity that was occurring, the number of crowds, some of the vandalism. And at the time, there were also some discussion about ways of correcting that problem, one of them being the parking decal. And that was part of the study session. So out of that, you know, we did a couple of things. We came back to council, and our recommendation at that time was installation of security cameras at CDM Main Beach. We also have them at The Wedge, as well as Little Corona. And that was an opportunity to install those cameras and, again, allow us to utilize our most expensive resource, which is our officers, to the highest possible level. And by having the cameras there, we have officers that know when there's activity on the beach, they can walk down to the beach, particularly at Little Corona, and know somebody's there as opposed to walking down there, spending half hour walking down there, coming back and finding out there's nobody there. So those cameras have been installed right after that, and they are being monitored in our dispatch center. We also requested and received funds from the city council for installation of a metal security gate at CDM Main Beach to secure it at night so no one could get in. And at that time, there was also a discussion, and it was approved, obviously, to increase our presence up on Ocean Boulevard, as well as closure of the beach at night. And at that time, the city council approved, I believe, it was $38,000 to hire extra officers, two officers, Friday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights from 9:00 to 3:00 in the morning. And we did that, as well as increasing our presence with our beach, the beat officers. We also made a big effort in 2007 to increase our communications with the community. We had some community meetings. We also used emails in our neighborhood watch program to get out the message of what we were doing, to get feedback from that. And initially, obviously, there's a lot of concern about it, but as time went on, the residents seemed to be pretty satisfied, particularly up on Ocean Boulevard and the issues we were dealing with there. And as a result of the actions that were taken by city council, we spent $50,000 in overtime to facilitate the two footbeat patrols on Ocean Boulevard and closing the beach at 10:00. Now, we were authorized to spend $38,000 and get reimbursed, but we spent the $50,000, and we absorbed that in our budget. We never came back to council to ask for that $38,000. But those footbeats, in that period of time, for the summer months, they issued 437 tickets, and they made 22 arrests, just from those two officers that were assigned Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The area units that increased their presence in that same time period issued 522 citations and made 82 arrests in that general area. Now, obviously, not all the arrests were on Ocean Boulevard, but it was in that general area. So it was pretty significant. In 2008...
Before you move on, what were the arrests for generally? Do you have any?
Some of them were alcohol. A lot of them were being on the beach after hours.
So just physically being on the beach, but not conduct other conduct other than some alcohol?
Yeah, there was some criminal arrests, but that was a smaller portion of it. Most of them were arrests for either being on the beach, or some self-initiated offense like narcotics arrest or something like that. So that was pretty beneficial for us to do that. As we get to 2008, we kind of had the problem in hand up on Ocean Boulevard. There were some concerns from residents about the problems at the beach and the crowds and the conduct during daytime. So we took a look at that and see what we could do at daytime. Now, at the same time, we didn't completely shift away from focusing on Ocean Boulevard. We were able to do the same enforcement just by using our nighttime area officers. So in 2008, I did not have any officers assigned, hired extra up on Ocean Boulevard. But we still continued to close the beach at 10:00, and we did that with our existing resources. So in 2008, we kind of shifted because now the concerns were daytime. So the actions we took at that point, we've been coordinating, and what part of the issue at this point was some of the fire rings and the barbecue issues. So we coordinated our efforts with, obviously, the police department, the lifeguards, fire department, general services, code enforcement, also the recreation department and parking services, to really address that. One of the things we were concerned, as we tried to address the barbecue issue, we wanted to make sure that there was some place for them to get rid of the hot coals. So general services installed some receptacles where they can dump hot coals. The fire department had buckets available, lifeguard stands to douse the barbecues. Code enforcement was out there, as well as the park rangers. And, you know, we knew going into last year that whenever we changed municipal codes like this, I believe that the majority of the people are going to follow the rules and do what they're supposed to do. But it's an education process, and after all these years, to suddenly take a high enforcement stance on barbecues as an issue and expect it to be corrected one year is not going to happen. So we're approaching this from a couple of different areas, particularly last year. We hired extra, one officer on Saturday and Sunday, just daytime on the weekends, to be out there and make advisals and issue citations. But we're also trying to educate people. It's going to take several years to educate all the people that come to the beach about what the requirements are. We did that with enforcement. Again, Ocean Boulevard at night was maintained by our area officers. We continue to get positive feedback from the community about our efforts up on Ocean Boulevard. Daytime project, again, we're continuing to educate. We think we've seen some, you know, improvement last year, but it was slight. And, you know, we're dealing with beachgoers that don't come to the beach on a regular basis, so we're often dealing with repeat, first-time people coming to the beach. But as a result of our overtime last year, I spent $8,600 in overtime to have that officer assigned to CDM Main Beach daytime on the weekends. And in the same period of time, we issued 909 citations. Of those 900, 223 were out for after-hours. We issued 143 barbecue violations and 400 vehicle code violations. And the 143 barbecue violations is on top of all the advisals we made where we told people to get rid of their barbecues and take them off the beach.
Chief, what were the vehicle code violations?
Well, the vehicle code violations, particularly up on the beach, up on Ocean Boulevard, could be a wide variety of anything. They weren't on the beach themselves, in the parking lot, or up on Ocean Boulevard. But I want to demonstrate that even while we kind of changed focus down to daytime in that area, we continued a pretty high presence with our enforcement. And, you know, a lot of these municipal, minor vehicle code violations that we enforce up on the Ocean Boulevard are an opportunity to send a message that, you know, if you're going to be in Newport, you have to follow the rules, your car has to operate correctly, whether it's turning, you know, over the double L lines to get into the parking, or, you know, parking in red, red curbs, there's a wide variety.
So this could include parking tickets as well as...
Yes.
Doing things wrong?
Absolutely.
Blocking driveways.
Blocking driveways. Anything that's in the vehicle, which is a wide range of things.
Question for you, chief. Some years ago, the lifeguards started at the direction of the city, started to get involved in some enforcement. And fire chief at the time pulled them off, and he thought, you know, people could get hurt, and that if you have a problem, call the police. And when I look at the activities here, there does seem to be a substantial amount of policing activity, you know, some of... So my question to you is, is this activity something that the police should continue to handle, or do you think this is, this activity and the people are encountering that Park Patrol is going to be able to handle this?
I think the Park Patrol is just one portion of it. I think, like with the issues we've dealt with before, it's going to take cooperation of all the different city departments. And the more we layer it, the more we can educate, the more we can advise people. And clearly, when it comes to enforcement, particularly if it's a volatile situation, that's what we're there for. But the way we have the program set up now, and we just used this on this past holiday weekend, is that, you know, at the ticket booth, they're passing out flyers advising, you know, everybody of the things they can and cannot do at the beach. They're verbally telling the visitors, you can't barbecue, you can't burn your pallets, those types of things. The lifeguards, when possible, are advising people as well. The park ranger will be in the same position, although he can issue a citation. But ultimately, if it becomes to, you know, if somebody's been warned two or three times, then clearly, that's the time for us to call us and have the police officer come down and write a citation. And that's kind of like the cameras, and, you know, let's use our most expensive resource for the situation when it's really needed, which is actually writing the ticket.
Okay, that would be helpful. We kind of have the spectrum from education to enforcement. Where does Park Patrol fit into that spectrum?
Well, they're going to be the ones that are on the beach, actually doing, walking the sand, doing the advisals, issuing some citations. But that, they're going to be dedicated to that, I assume. Whereas the parking attendants are also having another job. And the lifeguards, you know, their primary focus is not going to be watching for violations on the beach, it's really for the rescue and the public safety. If they see something, have an opportunity, they'll advise. But the more eyes we have down there to alert us what's going on when we're really needed, that's going to be a benefit to us.
I think the way we envision it, though, is that the Park Patrol will take care of the issue. If they can't take care of the issue and they're getting pushed back, then they would be the ones that would call the police for backup. So they would write the citation. If people refuse to leave, then that would require some backup.
Right. And again, because of the budget issues, you know, I'm holding three officer positions open for some budget reduction. But what the impact that really is, is it limits the amount of overtime I have available. So whereas I had $50,000 in '07, I spent $9,000, roughly $9,000 last year. Part of my goals was to make my 2% reduction, is reducing my overtime budget. And we've been pretty successful in dealing with some of these issues, once we get the start on it with just our area units, and that's what I intend to do, because I do not have the resources to pay extra to have people down on the beach on the weekends. But I think the Park Ranger is a complement that will, again, assist us in one more tier of enforcement, but also have an additional set of eyes on the beach. And, you know, we will be down there as well, doing enforcement, but if something occurs when we're not there, we have another set of eyes that can call us and request our assistance. And I will pass... Do you have any questions on the historical or the enforcement end of it? Okay, I'll pass it to Laura.
Thank you, Chief Klein. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As John illustrated for you, we do have some issues down at Big Corona. I think most pressing is the barbecues that are being used down there and what's being burned in the fire pit, which is really what has brought us to you today. We have discussed this issue on two occasions with the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission. It was brought forth by Commissioner Hamilton, who lives in the area, who expressed her concerns and her residents' concerns about the issues that are down there. And so the PBNR created a subcommittee. We met with them with a variety of departments, police department, recreation, senior services, parking, fire, to talk about a cost-effective resolution to some of the issues that continue down there. So what resulted in that recommendation came back to the commission. They took action at their April meeting and asked staff to bring this recommendation forward to the city council for their consideration. And essentially, what that would be is adding additional 30 hours per week on a year-round basis. There'd be a heavy emphasis during the summer months, which would be Memorial Day through Labor Day, where we'd have a Park Patrol officer down at Big Corona Friday, Saturday, and Sunday throughout the day, really coming from an educational standpoint. It would also allow us to expand our year-round patrol to the 68 parks and facilities that we have throughout the city of Newport Beach. And truly, having a year-round employee helps in a lot of different ways. There is some pretty extensive training and specialized training that we would continue to need to work on with this individual. But also, experience goes a long way. When you've got someone that's been in the trenches, after a while, they understand how to deal with the issues that are actually prevalent down at the beach. Just to give you a little bit of history about the Park Patrol program and how it's expanded over the years, it was created in '03, '04, and it was really kind of a park ambassador position. And their responsibilities have expanded quite a bit over time. We assist the police department. John talked a little bit about that over last summer down at Big Corona. We have radios directly linked to the police department now, so when they do get in a situation where they feel they're threatened or the issue's escalating, they can get direct contact with the police department and call on them to come down and assist. We're helping with general services on after-hours calls, if there's something our staff can help with until the next morning when general services gets on. We've been assisting in a variety of different capacities. Also, fire, library services, we've been assisting them with some loitering going on at their facilities. And then also with administrative services as well, looking at film permits and licenses and those types of things that they issue to their department. So when we talk about increased direct calls from the public, we closely track the public contact that we have, and those do include calls from the community, that we have information that we hand out regarding Park Patrol staff, so the community can call them directly when they find something is happening within the parks. The first full year of that program, we had about 800 direct calls for service. And just this following year, in '08, that number had climbed to 5,300 direct calls for service. So that's either calls coming in from the public or us being out there in our normal routine, assisting in a variety of different capacities. And then also with the economy, we're seeing an increase for commercial demand within our parks, and that can range from vendors wanting to use parks, boot camps, training camps, those types of things. So we're seeing a lot more of that happening within our facilities. What we're proposing, the total first-year cost would be around $40,000. That would include 30 hours a week year-round, some benefits, the one-time cost would be uniform, some equipment. We also do have some printing costs in here as well. Chief Klein showed you the information card that we have printed up as well and are already starting to give out to the community to try to help educate them on what's allowed and what's not allowed down at Big Corona. And then thereafter, annual estimated cost would be about $34,000. We are thinking that this cost right here will be a little bit less. We're looking at doing a shared vehicle with code to save on some costs as well, so that may come down about $3,000. This, again, is just the informational card that we started handing out. Parking lot attendants are handing it out, Park Patrol is handing out, PD is handing it out, the lifeguards are distributing it as well. So I think in closing, certainly, the Park Patrol position is not going to solve this problem entirely. We think it's going to help, and it'll take a collaboration between all of our departments to start to get on top of the situation down there, if that's the direction you wish for us to take. So that completes our presentation. Certainly, if you have any questions that you have.
Councilman Gardner?
Well, I support the Park Patrol position, and not just because of Big Corona. I think it would be very helpful during the rest of the year because we have conflicts as far as who's using the park and all that sort of thing. Something that has been mentioned before that would make life easier, and I know the Coastal Commission would be a hurdle, but we really, at some point, should consider removing, simply removing the fire rings, and that you would have no flames on the beach. rings, and that you would be, have no flames on the beach. I mean, in the old days, when you went on a picnic, your mother fried chicken at home, and then you came out and you ate cold food. So maybe PBNR Commission can take that up at some point, because it would make it so much easier, then it wouldn't, you couldn't barbecue, you couldn't have fire, period. And we wouldn't have to have all these special monitors. It, it's tough. I saw what was going on last, the summer, as far as trying to get rid of barbecues. It's a challenge.
Okay, any other comments? Councilwoman Curry?
Yeah, Chief, I want to commend you for the work that your department's done in addressing this issue. One of the things that was talked about back in 2007, when this first came up, was issues of gangs or tagging and that kind of thing. Are we confident we've alleviated those types of issues, for the most part?
In, in the CDM area, absolutely. You know, vandalism, particularly graffiti, has gone up all over the city. Our officers have made some pretty significant arrests dealing with that. We've got people in, in the act, you know, at lifeguard towers, both on the west side and in CDM. It's a constant struggle. We have, every vandalism report we take now, I have our gang unit, which is an ancillary responsibility for officers, to analyze reports, see if they can identify the gang that might be involved. We're also exploring right now, joining a countywide database where every city puts in their graffiti, and every city can search that. And about six months ago, there was a, a big arrest out of Lake Forest that where they used that system to identify a, a pretty prolific group of, of taggers. So we're looking at that. But, you know, we're still seeing tagging in, in all our public beaches, but, but we don't have the gang issues, or, and I certainly don't think the community sees the same concern now that they did two years ago.
Well, I, I would agree with that. I think you've done a real good job in, in addressing that, and I think that the Park Patrol was probably a very good follow-on solution. So I support Councilmember Gardner in, in this recommendation.
Just to make sure that council understands that on your budget checklist, there is an item under Recreation Department for $37,350. And again, just to be very crystal clear about this, this is a recommendation coming from PBNR.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Next item is reclassification of a video producer to custody officer. And Chief came in for one position in the budget hearings, and I wanted to come to the City Council with no new positions. You do recall that as far as administrative services is concerned, we went from 70 and 75% of a position to a full position, but I didn't want to add any new positions. And I thought the Chief had good reasons for what he wanted to do, but I told him, as we left that meeting, if he could trade in that, that position for another position, then I would certainly look at supporting it and bringing it to the City Council. And I think he has done so, so that's why we're going to make that recommendation. It happened after the budget was printed.
Just, you know, I looked at the Fire Department budget pretty closely to see if they had any positions they could spare. They didn't, so I had to look at my own budget. Originally, I was going to come in and, and ask for additional position, because we have a, a study that was done by the California or the Correction Standard Authority that does our yearly inspections on our jails, and they made a recommendation that they felt that we were understaffed in that there were sometimes, sometimes in the, the day where we would have one officer, one jail custody officer on duty, they felt that we needed to have two, particularly at all the high-frequency, high-activity times. And, and part of this is for suicide prevention. If, if you remember, we had at least one attempt suicide this past year, where our jail staff in their 15-minute rounds walked by and saw one of our inmates attempted to hang himself. So he was able to get into the jail, hold that person up. He's got a panic button on his belt, he's able to hit the panic button and get additional help down there. The concern from the standard authority was that we shouldn't have two people, one person dedicated to some of the procedures, but also one person dedicated to deal with the inmate population. Now, we don't always have inmate population in there, but we never know when that's going to be. So they recommend, their recommendation was, was that we increase staff. We also looked at that as a way of increasing staff, but also changing the, the shift scheduling, going, possibly going from three shifts to two shifts, 12-hour days, so we were able to, right now, we use that third shift as coverage, and they go from 3:00 to 3:30 in the morning. That's not always a critical time. Then that's still when they go leave at 3:00, or at times leaves that portion between 3:30 and 6:00, when they might, there only might be one jailer. So we're exploring going to two, two shifts instead of three. But the recommendation to have the additional jailer position, I was able to change it a little bit when our video producer decided to leave the department, and then that, we, then we had a free position. I evaluated these two positions and tried to see, you know, the value of both of them, and, and when I looked at it, the jailer was, was, from my perspective, a must-have, and the video producer was a, you know, it was a nice-to-have. It was nice that we had her, but it wasn't critical to our operations. And in that video producer job, that was not dealing with any, any of our criminal evidence, for the most part, our crime scene, people do all that, so for the most part, that was some of the community relations videos that we were doing. So I, I really couldn't justify, you know, going out and filling that position when I really have a need for the jailer position. So if you look at the, the numbers, the proposed custody officer is $84,000. What our video producer was making was $121,000, and that leaves a difference of $37,000. And we believe for that $37,000, I can go out and contract for any of the community videos that I need done, whether it's sports apply, the police appreciation breakfast, and do that without having a full-time person on staff. And that would leave my budget basically intact from where it was last year, without, without any increase.
So Chief, when we went from $121,000 to $37,000 in video, are we doing less video, or how does that work out?
I think that, you know, as that position changed over time, originally, that position was doing a lot of criminal video. There was also discussion about a, a number of training videos, and over the years, a lot of this stuff has not occurred. So we're really down to, you know, five or six basic videos that we need to produce every year, certainly not enough to justify, you know, going out and filling that position.
Chief, the proposed custody officer, that's a sworn officer position?
No, that's not.
It's not?
It's not.
Neither one of those are sworn positions, then?
That's correct.
And so do those costs up there include the benefits load, or is that straight salary?
That's the benefits as well.
Includes benefits?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is Clean Natural Gas presentation by Mark Harmon. This is about the refueling station, and then we also want to talk about trash trucks.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. What we're going to do, Homer and I, I got a couple introduction sites. City Manager and I thought it'd be good, since this is the largest project for general services next year, we thought it'd be good to do a review, kind of where we're at and where we're going with this project. First, the, kind of a review, the reason we're here. We had two AQMD rules that mandate the use of alternative fuel trucks, 1193, 1196. The alternative fuel program is made up of three components, the fuel station installation, fleet maintenance shop, and the vehicle replacement. The fuel station installation, if you remember, we, Council approved a partnership with the Clean Energy Corporation to install a, a CNG station at the city yard. That partnership, that agreement benefited the city in several ways. You see here, Clean Energy will provide all of the necessary capital for the project. They'll provide a preferential rate for city vehicles. Right now, if we were to be using compressed natural gas in place of diesel, that cost for a gallon equivalent would be about 95 cents a gallon. Currently, the city is paying about $2.10 for diesel fuel. So there would be a savings of about a dollar per gallon using the compressed natural gas. That's significant, given that the city uses about 100,000 gallons of diesel per year. So we're, we're a large diesel user for a city this size. Clean Energy will provide all the maintenance for the fueling station. They'll pay a royalty fee to the city of 5 cents per gallon, gallon equivalent, and that's for all of the outside use of the fueling station. That would be your taxis or your shuttle vans, that kind of a thing. Clean Energy will handle all of the billing issues and collection issues for outside users at that station. So really, it's a turnkey project as far as the city is concerned, and again, Council approved that in June of 2008, and we expect that station to be fully installed, operational by the end of the year, by the end of this calendar year. So that's the station. The second component of the project is the equipment maintenance shop modifications. And if you remember in our, I think we did, well, actually, we did a couple of study sessions on this issue, the shop, the way it is designed today, would not be able to accommodate CNG equipment to work on it. It has to go through some significant modifications. When you're working on CNG, you're working with the compressed fuel, and so there has to be exhaust fans, leak detection systems, and some ventilation improvements there. In this budget that you're considering now is a $125,000 CIP item that will pay for those shop modifications. So that will be part of our CIP, assuming it's approved by Council. That will be part of our CIP project for next year. What that $125,000 does is take two existing heavy equipment bays, and it will convert or modify those bays in such a way that we'll be able to handle the heavy CNG equipment. That puts in some exhaust fans, some airtight walls around those two bays. It pretty much seals off that part of the shop. We, we did get those numbers from an independent study. Again, that was in June of 2008, so we think that that $125,000 is a good number to make those shop modifications. The final issue, the final component of the three that I listed, has to do with the vehicle replacements. Now, currently, City Council has a policy, F9 policy, that replaces refuse equipment. Now, this is a good, a, a good spot to stop and just remind the Council, though we talk a lot about the refuse equipment. That's what we've brought before this Council's in study sessions as far as heavy equipment. Those AQMD rules apply to all heavy diesel equipment, so it isn't just refuse collection. It also includes heavy equipment in the Utilities Department, beach cleaning equipment, and all of those things. We focus on the refuse vehicles, or we are tonight, because that is the, the type of equipment that we need to replace the quickest. That's the oldest. That has been deferred for several years based on this project, so that's kind of the focus, but it is all heavy equipment. Council policy F9 requires refuse collection equipment to be replaced every eight years or 100,000 miles. Staff did a competitive bid on May 7th of this year, just last month, and we did receive two bids for the two different type trucks. The top bid is from Carmonita Truck is for our front loader. That's the larger truck that you see in the more open neighborhoods, one person. The truck can hold considerably more weight. Again, it's used for our more open sections of Newport Beach. The second bid from Rush Truck Center, these are the low bids, is the rear loader at 203, almost 204,000. That's the small alley truck that we use in places, Corona del Mar, the island, and, and those tighter places, two-man truck, because a man will have to ride on the back just to be able to dump the trash. Once you're in those alleys, you can't open the door to get out. So those are the two type trucks, those are the low bids. There are funds budgeted next year in the budget, again, that you're considering. We budgeted for the front loader 200, and I want to say 60,000, and for the rear loader, we budgeted 208,000. So those two competitive bids are, in fact, below what's budgeted in next year's budget. When I say competitive bids, we had seven bids for the front loader, and I believe eight bids for the rear loader. So it was a pretty competitive process. Interesting note on the front loader, there was a difference of about $20 between the lowest bid and the next bid, and you're talking $244,000 bids. So it was, it was pretty close, to say the least.
Does the operator of the front loader, does, do they get out of the truck, or are they just drive in?
Yeah, they're, they're by themselves. That's a one-man truck. So he'll pull up to a house, jump out of the truck, run over to the can. That's how, that's how we work. No, but he'll go over to the can, dump the cans, and then get back in the truck. He, he is by himself, and it's, it's a tough job.
But he drives, he kind of drives standing up on the right-hand side.
No, that's not correct. We're, we're left-hand drive trucks.
Which is, okay.
No, Councilmember Webb, you are absolutely correct. There are trucks, a lot of cities use a stand-up right-hand drive. We do not. There's, there's two sides to that argument. The stand-up right-hand drive, they've had people get up on the freeway to go to a landfill, and if you're not used to standing up and driving on the opposite side, it can get dicey quick. Yes, ma'am?
I've noticed some communities, they have mechanical, people don't get out of the trucks. Is that true?
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely true. In fact, we're, we're very old-school in that sense. A lot of communities have done. It's automated collection that you're talking about. You have a, a very specific type container, and the truck will go right down the street, driver never gets out, and the arm will come out, dump the container, lower it, and just on his way. And, and apparently, that's been discussed here in this community, not well-received a few years ago, but that has been discussed. There are certainly cost efficiencies to doing that. It is not a cheap program to get involved in, to transition to. It, it can be very expensive.
And then what sort of portion of the city's geography do you use the front loader for?
The front loader, the one-man truck, would be about 70% of the community. The other 30% would be the, the tighter alleys, narrow streets. And you can imagine, like on the island and, and some places west Newport, you get in there, it's pretty, pretty tight. I don't, I don't know that there would be another way to do that, other than having people move their trash out of the alleys to the street. And I, hopefully, I won't have to fight that battle. There's some funding opportunities. So those are the competitive bids. Again, that, that funding is in your budget, equipment replacement budget for next year. There are some funding opportunities. I've listed a couple there. The second one, the MSRC grant, we have applied for that. That grant went in a couple of weeks ago, and hopefully, within the next month or so, we'll hear on whether we're successful in, in that grant application. So that would certainly help.
Mark, those cost numbers up there then are before consideration of any grant monies that might offset.
That is correct.
And if you're successful with the Mobile Source Air Reduction Grant, how much would that reduce the cost of those vehicles?
That, that's hard to say. We, we did apply for that same grant, Councilmember Hen, maybe a year ago, and it was only about $14,000 per vehicle. There, there's some matching fund-type grants, so there's, there's some other things that we can do there. The city has a 2766 fund that is money set aside for this type of a purchase, either clean air stations, clean air vehicles, that kind of a thing.
I thought the clean, the clean energy people said at one point, they could help us get grant money, or has that panned out at all, or?
No, they're, they're working on that. In fact, a representative is here from the company, but they're doing that, they're looking at different funding sources. Again, they're on the hook for the station, but they, they are working with us to, to secure the equipment as well. Obviously, the more fuel they can put through that station, the better off they are. So they're, you know, they're motivated to help us get the equipment, too.
So as far as the cost is concerned, we wanted to present with you the worst-case scenario, and then the thinking would be if, if things are fine, then we would come back in the new budget year?
Right, that's, that's correct.
To where you could award the bid.
That's correct. And, and here are the four trucks that we would recommend replacing first, and, and the only reason I put those up there kind of goes to that eight-year, 100,000-mile requirement. These are two front loaders, two rear loaders, and you'll see that they've surpassed that, that Council policy of F9. So these are the type of trucks, and I said we're focusing on refuse collection first. These are the, the equipment that we're looking at, that we've got to get out in the street. These are not backup trucks. These are out there every day, eight hours a day, picking up trash. So, you know, credit to the shop for keeping, keeping this equipment going. And again, those funds are included in the next budget. The next step, as City Manager said, is to come back The next step, as St. Andrew said, is to come back. We're planning on coming back the first meeting in July with those bids for the four trucks, and hopefully, council will approve that purchase. That combined with the work on the shop next year, the fleet shop, will put us in, in good shape with our CNG program, and then we'll just move forward. One last note, this, I mentioned it's all heavy equipment. That's the, that's the law. That's the AQMD mandate. But there's a very strong interest in looking at other equipment in the city fleet, small pickups, code enforcement trucks, vehicles that don't travel outside the city would be great candidates for compressed natural gas to use that station. Again, if you look at the price of the CNG compared to the current price of fuel, there's significant savings there as well.
What, what about the old trucks? Do they just get junked, or what happens to them?
Yeah, you cannot sell the used, that's a good question. You cannot sell by law the used diesel equipment. When they first came up with the mandates, they said you only had to buy alternative field trucks if they're new. So, everybody went around buying old trucks. Well, that didn't solve the problem, because then now you had 20-year-old trucks polluting the environment. So, AQMD came out with a law that you, if, once I sell, once I am done with these trucks, the engines have to be destroyed. I can sell the shell, but I cannot sell a diesel engine, unless it goes out of the country. Well, no, no, I'm not, seriously, I, we have sold diesel fire trucks, and we have sold diesel refuse trucks to the city of Ensenada, and you can, you can actually do that legally.
Councilmember Hen?
One further question. Dennis, the, these four trucks that'll be replacement trucks, will have the money funded in our replacement reserves such that this won't cause any disruptions in the funding of the replacement reserve?
No, that's correct. They're, they're fully depreciated, and we've been expecting to replace them for quite some time.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have one. Can you help me convert my Hummer to CNG?
Sure, bring that, bring that by the shop, and we'd be happy to look at it. Just leave it for a couple months. We, we, we need a test vehicle.
It might be predated life, though.
Okay, thank you, Mark. We, we will go kind of off the list now and get the remaining, remaining items. And the first one of that is looking at a reorganization, basically, a trade-in of field superintendent in utilities for a utilities department deputy director position. That's George to do a PowerPoint on this. Okay, we may not have loaded the right PowerPoint.
The one that we sent down? The one I do not have? Yeah, apologize, Bill. Oh, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My presentation, which I promised will be much shorter than my rate presentation two weeks ago, I've got it down to about five slides. But my, my request here, my, we thought this would be a good time to bring forward the request for a reorganization. When I came up in March, if you recall, that we hired Olin Management Technical Services to do an organizational review of the utilities department. I've been in the saddle for a little bit, over five months, and, and we have some, I'll flip the next slide. Because of the numerous turnovers in the management, and also the vacancies, which I think I told you about, I have two folks that are in Iraq, I have an, an open manager's position, and also, some of the issues that we've been seeing over the last year or two, such as the water supply, which you know we'll be entering into after July, the allocations from the Metropolitan Water District, and then rates, water and sewer rates, which I've brought forward to you in, I didn't link the presentation last time, and regulatory compliance, there, there are many issues that are coming forward to utilities department that we didn't deal with in the years past. And with the environmental issues, that's the green building, and there's some other conservation issues that we're working on. We see a, a higher level of workload in the upper management than we did in the past. And so, as I just stated, in March 2009, rather than just arbitrarily fill these open positions, we brought on OMTS to analyze the administrative functions, review the administrative workload, and recommend organizational changes. So, currently, like I say, I have the open office manager's position, I have the two folks that are in Iraq, I have also a specialist position open, so we have four vacancies, although we know in 18 months or so we'll get our folks back from Iraq. But we haven't filled anything or done anything until we can bring this forward to you and, and look at our entire organization. OMTS's recommendation immediately was to, actually, we're gonna, rather than fill that manager's position, was to create a deputy director position. And part of this is, is because my time as director has been so focused on these high-level issues such as water supply and these environmental issues, and then these, all the reports and things, that the day-to-day operations of the utilities department are so time-consuming that really, operations and other things that are functioning, but really don't get the attention that they need. And so, by converting that position, and I'll get to an org chart here in a few minutes, or in a minute, is to create this deputy director who would manage the administrative, engineering, and customer service divisions, and customer services will take on, that division will take on more importance as water becomes shorter and people start calling about bills and how to conserve water. So, we're enhancing the customer service utilities, but also the electrical sections of the department. The deputy director would assist the director and overall management, the day-to-day, and these are the contracts and agreements and the budget and the personnel issues that we do on a normal day-to-day basis. We have about, almost 60 employees, 55 full-time employees, and then part-time, about eight, eight and a half part-time employees. So, we, we deal with quite a few, whether injuries, illnesses, vacations, just the day-to-day personnel issues, and then, of course, customer service. This person would assist the director in developing and plan, implementing department goals and objectives, council priorities, which, you know, we're looking at the rates, the feasibility of tiered, tiered rates, and some of these special projects, and assist the director in operations and regulatory requirements. We're, like I mentioned earlier, the WDR, the waste discharge requirements require us to videotape all of the city sewers within two years. So, there's a lot of regulatory things that we didn't have in the past, that we really need some assistance in guiding those projects, that are outside the normal operations job description. And then, represent the city in professional organizations and outside agency meetings. What this is, the, is the municipal water district, Metropolitan Water District, Orange County Water District. These are agency meetings on how we establish our basin pumping percentage, where we get our water from, how allocations are set. We need to actually be at those meetings, be at those, sit in those, and participate with those agencies. And so, being away from the office, or send the deputy director, want to have the ability to send, so we can cover all these meetings. And then, serve as director in his or her absence. The current structure, we don't have a person there that fills in when I'm there, so, so basically, I fill in, I'm the chief operator, but also oversee the entire department. So, I need someone that can step in when I'm not available. This is the proposed organization. This would, the deputy director, primary responsibility would be over to the administration, engineering, customer service, and electrical, but also have the ability, we consolidated, we have two field operations managers currently, one is vacant, the other, we've moved all field operations under the other manager's position. I don't know where that little red thing is. Oh, is that it? So, what we did is this, this, all the operations, and these little asterisks mean that it's the, a division supervisor for each division. So, we have the water maintenance and repair, wastewater, water production, water quality system services. These are all the folks that are in trucks and out into the field, and we organize them under the current operations manager that would handle heavy equipment, dump trucks, all the field operations. So, we kind of, we reorganize the department, so, so there's some similarities in their jobs and duties, and they can communicate and work with each other to get the job done. And then, this regulatory safety, previously, we had a water quality coordinator position. This new, and this is only two employees, but the regulatory safety are these, all these federal, state, and local reports that we get on a, on a monthly basis. And the consumer confidence report, which you just, you saw many of the residents just got last week, this person is responsible for sending this out annually, the backflow program recycled, as you know, we're enhancing our recycled water system this year by adding two additional parts. There are regulatory issues with that, so this person handles that. This is that waste discharge requirement. This has taken on greater meaning with, of course, the reduction or actually elimination of any waste discharge into the bay or ocean. And then, the safety function that we don't currently have. So, we organize this, these people can actually report directly to me, but also have the ability to report to the deputy director. The operations manager that was in this other slot here, you can see, everybody was a flat line that reported directly to me.
What's the difference between what the director does and what the deputy director does?
The deputy director right now, as you see in this, will be responsible for, for these divisions here. I will still have, being the chief, the director is the chief operator by, designated by the California Department of Public Health. So, I'm, I am responsible for the operations of all utilities, the water, sewer, electrical, of the entire department. So, the operations managers, manager will report to me directly, and I will take ultimate responsibility of the operations. And the regulatory and safety of the department, it reports directly to me. The deputy director will have the ability to oversee those divisions, but primary responsibility will be all of the customer service, engineering, administration, contracts, and giving me the ability to go out into the, into the field and, and be a voice for the city of these other agencies. So, there's, there is a difference.
Okay. One of the things, I have a little bit of familiarity with this, and when I, and I can appreciate that water issues are growing in complexity as well as, you know, the stakes are increasing. And when I think about our airport, you know, we have a really seasoned veteran on that, the city manager, a lot of experience in policy, and we have a former city attorney. So, I mean, people with very long policy experience, and so, it seems to me if the void we're trying to fill is policy, you know, why not get a, a water policy person with, you know, 20 years' experience? And, you know, versus, which I would see as distinct as the day-to-day operations of utilities department.
Well, that, with the 60 employees, yes, and I can appreciate that. Water policy, what we've currently been doing is at the Metropolitan Water District, Municipal Water District, Orange County, there is policies, but there's also a big operational, how much water can you pump? What is the capacity of the, where does, what's the size of your reservoirs? What's your demand and need? So, I believe there's not, not just a policy demand when you're at those meetings, but, but a knowledge of how the city operates, how much water we need, what we anticipate in the future. And so, there is, I believe, more of an operational background rather than just policy on where we're going to get our water from, for instance. Of course, there's other things with the wastewater and electrical, what do we want to do with energy savings? That may be a policy decision, but then we need to look for energy-saving programs. Last year, we saved $26,000 by doing demand bid, for instance. We entered into a contract with Interoc that when, when they were going into rolling blackouts, they contacted agencies such as ours, and we were able to reduce our wells where we didn't knew operationally it would affect the residents, we could reduce our demand by shutting down our wells, and they wrote us a check for $26,000. Maybe policy, but really more of an operational background. But to be able to get out there and look for these, for these opportunities, I really think is more of an operational, more than just policy. So, I, you know, if I send folks out into those meetings, I think they would have to know the system, they'd have to know how the city operates, water, wastewater, electrical, oil, gas, rather than just maybe a policy person, which you'd see at MODOC.
Well, yeah, I kind of see a lot of lawyers, too.
Yeah.
Wouldn't necessarily have an operations background.
I guess the way that I see it is, is that we really want George to attend most of these meetings where we're talking about regional issues and talking about water availability, because he knows how it's going to affect us. But we also need somebody who can take care of the day-to-day operations so that George can concentrate on that. And then, the policy issues, that George won't be making policy, he will interpret how, how the various policy discussions could affect us, and we bring that to city council, so that you can weigh in on the policy that you want us to advocate for you.
No, agreed. In order to fund this, and, and we know we're not adding any additional bodies, we still have the total of 55 full-time employees. We're not recommending any more bodies or slots. Of those 55, as you know, going into fiscal year 9-10, I previously mentioned that we have some vacancies, and we intend to hold those folks that aren't here, that are, that are over in Iraq. The other position just became vacant, one of our employees became a fireman recently, and we don't intend to fill that as well. The man, operation manager position, if we use these monies towards this deputy director, we see that the deputy director salary range, this is working through human resources, is, is this range here, and this is the normal salary. The benefits, salary and benefits, a total package for a deputy director would be 176. If we eliminate the operation manager, manager position, we have some funding available of 162, which leaves a balance of 13,000. I'm not asking for that money out of this fiscal year. We know that by the time we even fill the position, that we'll have that money available. But in addition, we know that we have these other vacancies that can pay for it. So, I don't need any additional money, I have salary savings in the, in the budget for this year, this year, if not possibly into the next year, as we look at those two employees not coming back for 18 months. So, we really see it as a elimination of a position, keep the body count the same, not filling the positions that we have now so we can fund this position. So, we, we feel it's a, it's a cost-neutral thing, but wanted to run the whole plan by and see how you feel.
Councilmember Gardner?
Well, I think it's a, to me, it's, it makes sense. I mean, water just becomes more and more important, and I can see that your workload is just going to increase, and to have someone that you can rely on and feel comfortable in your absence would be, be critical. Do you see this as a, any particular technical background, per se? Have you thought about what you're looking for, to sort of touch on what, what Councilwoman DeGel was?
Yeah, I'm looking really, and, and it's really with utilities, as you know, it's hard to find somebody who knows everything about electricity, oil, gas, water, wastewater. But, but there are utilities folks, if they're strong in one field, I'm sure they catch on to the other. So, it could be water, wastewater background. Administration, definitely, management, upper level, to handle those day-to-day things, those contracts, and, and to handle some of the, when you hand us a priority or something that you want done, I want to be able to, to get that done and, and divvy out the tasks amongst the whole division. But yes, I, I'm looking more of a public administrator with background or experience, with a lot of experience in utilities, to be able to do that. And we've, we've been working on a job description that would, would meet that.
Okay, any other questions, Congress? Okay, thank you, George.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, I'm going to call Cynthia forward, and we can, I, I thought it would be good for the city council to hear, again, a few details of what is being planned for the Corona Del Mar library, and how to basically change, I think, our focus of that library and try and attract some new usage. As you well remember, over the last couple of years, we've kind of scratched our heads in terms of how we can attract people, and especially the, the young people, but I think Cynthia has come up with a, a good idea that makes a lot of sense, and we're not asking for any new budget allocation. We think the cost is going to be...
We're turning them away at, at the branch now. I mean, it's been very successful.
Okay. Cynthia, I'll quit talking and turn it over to you.
Thanks, Homer. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Contrary to what my fellow department heads think, I'm not standing here to tell you I've gotten a $200,000 gift to do this, but we do have some really good ideas that have come out of a retreat that we had last summer, right after I came on board. One of the list of 50 was to really revamp services at Corona Del Mar, and we do have a really good plan, we think, that will be reflective of what the regular users need, and then what the new crowd we've attracted through the addition of a lot of story hours and things like that would really benefit from. Let me see if I can figure out how to do, there we go. Our plan is to expand services in the following way. First, we're going to reorganize interior space to enhance collections and programming. And what that means is that we're actually going to really put the children's collection on steroids, if you will, and really beef it up to be reflective of what people want. In other words, we're going to add a lot of new books to children's, and then continue to enhance the story hours and other activities that we currently are using. We're also going to create a more current and user-friendly, if you will, a Barnes and Noble-type adult services collection. And in the space that we use, of which we vacate with the shelving, we're going to add new seating for laptop computers. And then, we're also going to extend service hours two nights a week, so that we actually create a late-night Wi-Fi user space in that area. Also, we wanted to bring to your attention that we're, we're planning a 50th anniversary week of events, July 27th through the 31st, and this will be to commemorate our, our 50th anniversary. Basically, what we're going to do is add tables and chairs, we're going to have, add a coffee bar service... We're going to have, add a coffee bar service, a completely self-contained kind of thing where people can just buy a cup of coffee for a dollar, and that will be all self-supported. We're going to add some accoutrement that will help with, in panels, and make it look better, really update the, the look of it. And the cost to do all of this is about $30,000, and we've identified almost all of that in budget savings and gifts. So this is really good news.
If someone wanted to make a contribution specifically for the branch and its refurbishing, how would they do that?
Well, they could certainly either do it through the foundation and funnel it through the foundation, as we have received one gift so far for furnishing, or they could make a, a contribution directly to the library through just the city. So this is really good news, and we're really excited about it. Any questions?
Any questions, Cynthia?
Congratulations on your answer.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, before we conclude with the McFadden Square Phase II project, Councilman Hen had some questions on the fire budget, and I think we have an explanation that we can walk through on that one.
Thank you, Homer. I spoke to Councilmember Hen last week, I think Wednesday, and he had several questions, several regarding general services, questions regarding the Newport Coast rubbish contract, had some questions about the transfer station, contracting out the transfer station, some questions on park maintenance and what the increases we saw. I think we answered all those to satisfaction. The one that I hadn't, didn't have the answer to when I talked to him last week, regarded the fire department, this slide is directly out of the, the resource allocation plan, page 66, and Councilmember Hen picked up and noticed that there was a large increase in salaries and benefits between 2008, '09, and 2009, '10 was proposed. The reason for that is in that we have not yet posted the increase required by the firefighter association and the fire management association, MOUs, to this number here. So, next slide. You'll see that's an 8.84% increase. On the next slide, we computed the increase that will be posted to this current fiscal year. So the 2008, 2009 estimated salaries and benefit number, after factoring in the MOU increases that were already approved, was 27.7 million, going to 28.5 million, which is included in the, the budget. So a more realistic 2.69% increase. We thought we should point that out to you today in case you, you noticed that large increase when we were reviewing the budget.
How do we have such a large, it's like a 10% increase between '07, '08, and '08, '09? What was that attributed to? Because certainly salaries didn't go up 10%.
Or, or headcount, I don't think.
Yeah.
Well, maybe two people.
Number four people on the truck.
Counsel, Mayor, Council. We did increase on the trucks, and actually, we, in the last, during that time frame, were filling a lot of positions that had been left open, trying to bring down the overtime costs, but we were filling all those positions. So we're almost to the point where we're pretty full now. But there was a lot of openings that when I came on, that we were filling some, some large numbers that were vacancies because of retirements.
Was there a 4% salary increase?
And there was some large increases, and, and I will say, too, that we have a lar, a young personnel, and so we were seeing increases in their steps, where a lot of times, if you have a mature department, you're not seeing any more step increases because they're at the, they're at the maximum of their steps. We're not seeing that. I'm seeing 5% increase, or the step increases constantly now because of the young age of all the employees.
And I, also, I don't recall the exact amounts at this point. I could look it up, but there were some large per se rate increases during that time period as well.
Well, I appreciate your providing this explanation, Dennis. I was concerned that Chief Lewis had not gotten the memo about the 2% cuts and therefore was left out of the party. And I'm glad to know-
I was diligent in my 2%.
I'm glad to know that he's part of the party here.
I am part of the party.
The original impression left with the information to us was, you know, for a $2.3 million increase in our compensation budget didn't seem to make sense versus all the rest of the departments. So thanks for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, if we could move to what I think is the last item, and that is the McFadden Square Centennial Project Phase II. You know, to be honest with yourself, I'll be honest with, with you, I met with Steve Batum and Mark Harmon before this meeting to try and get our arms around what is being requested, and, and we were, we're still confused at this age, as to what Phase II is, and I think we were mixing it up with what we heard about Phase III. We had some, we have some concerns that we will share with you as far as ongoing maintenance and ongoing maintenance cost. But in talking with Ray Price just before this meeting, it seemed like maybe the best way to do it would, would be to start off and have him define what Phase II really is, and then we could go from there, because I, I think that will help focus the discussion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm happy to say that we have a project with great success, and it's basically paid for itself, and we're in a position where there are, we have now contributions of people who want to be a part of the McFadden Plaza, and we don't have enough room for them. So that's what Phase II is all about. Phase II basically involves another band of stone for the application of donors to those stones. Right now, we have run out of space for the $250 donor, the $500 donor, and the $1,000 donor. And that was quite surprising to us, but we still have demands, we still have people wanting to be part of the plaza and donate money. So this is, means that we have to add this second row of names around. The plaza was designed to do this. It was designed so that we have, with as little cost as possible, to make these additions throughout time. And we have room on the, of course, on the, on the labyrinth, which has all the names of the events, or titles of events that have happened over the last 100 years, and we have a couple of years that we have to add on to that. So we're here today, we basically, and I have, I don't know if you have it, did you have other slides up there? I don't know what your slide presentation is. Okay, which one? Just hit this? Oops. I don't think there are any. Anyway, I don't know if you want to hand this out. It was in the packet?
The city council has, has that.
They have this?
Yes.
Budget? Okay. So basi, basically, what we're asking is to add 111 new stone tiles in a band, and what that'll generate in time, once we have sold those out, is about $267,500 in revenues. And the cost of this addition is, we estimate it $46,500. The dip, the problem is, takes a while to get that money with the donations, and we need to make the addition of this ring soon to, in order to accommodate the people who are donating the money. And just as Phase I went, where we got an original $50,000 to start, as we went through the process, it paid for itself. And we know that this is going to continue on, and Phase III will happen maybe a few years, but it'll, hopefully, will have the money generated from the donations to pay for that. Any questions?
And the reason we're here is because of the request for $50,000 in advancement. I think that needs to be a question that the city council answers in terms of whether we do that. I don't have strong concerns about the money not coming back to us, but it, it is a question as how long that it will take. A couple of other issues that city, that the city staff has was, one of the requests in the memo, I think, from, from Bernie was to place a person, a person's in charge of the project, with the authority to handle the budget and sales and all of that. You know, this is something that is going to be an ongoing requirement and an ongoing demand. And we're not sure, you know, how many people will buy into having their names inscribed before we will come back, but we do have project people that are running a lot of projects at this time. And my concern is that when staff people are going to be wanted on this project, they're going to be wanted, and we're going to have to pull them off of something else. And I really need for you to understand that, because there are projects that are near and dear to your heart, too. I think the Centennial Project has been a big success. I think it continues to be a big success. And along with that goes higher maintenance requirements. We are sweeping the McFadden Square Centennial Project now twice a week. So we have been doing that for some time now. That cost is $21,000. According to Mark, you know, in, in order to do the job that really needs to be done there, we need to do that three times a week. So the cost would be $30,000. And we're looking at that cost for now and, and forever. This Phase II is not going to change the maintenance on that. As we get into Phase III, I think there are other maintenance issues that will need to be looked at. But I think a, a big concern that I have is because of the ongoing nature of this project, we will probably be on Phase II for a couple of years. And we're going to have people, you know, assigned to this project, but trying to balance that with all of the other projects, too. And I just feel like I have a responsibility to bring that in front of you in order to have you understand that.
Well, how does this work? Do we, do we have to get all, I guess there's 111 tiles, we have to get subscribers for all the tiles before there's any construction?
I hope not, because we have $2,500 waiting right now to be engraved.
I think the thinking is that, that the $50,000 advanced would be to put the granite in so that as names, you know, become available through their contributions, then they could be done over time.
Also, they're engraved after they're already in place.
That's correct.
This would be seed, seed money to allow the sale of additional spaces.
I, I think the thing that, I get some pushback from the staff because they're concerned about a budget, and this is a budget meeting. So I think that, and Homer would have to identify this and your staff, hopefully, for the next meeting, but if you want this contact, project to be continued as a legacy, live legacy, we brought in about $590,000, balanced at about $590,000, so we're pretty much break-even. But as you can see from the memo that I left you, there's some additional small budget items that have to be accomplished, and one of the main problems is that the city's going to have to assign somebody to take care of McFadden Square on a very minor basis, an hour a week, two hours a month, or some, some period, to be responsible for getting some of these things completed. Some of them have to do with Public Works Department, some have to do with the General Administration Department, if that's correct, title. But there is a small budget items that need to be completed, such as blackening of the letters. We have two more years if you want this to be a living history, like was proposed originally by the council and by the committee. We have two more years of add, addition for history, and we need to seal the project in a proper way, because it's never done because of some lettering that needs to be blackened, and this will make maintenance much easier also. And then obviously, there's maintenance costs. This, I think you need to establish a X-figure. We have a separate item on the budget for this, and so that the staff isn't having, you know, major problems with this, and somebody assigned to be able to get it, things engraved, to be able to take care of minor problems out there, and so on and so forth. And so I think there has to be, I don't know, $5,000, $10,000, $15,000, or something, or some figures allocated in this budget that when we bring in income, this income will go against not only the, the engraving and the hard costs, it'll go against maintenance also, which will help your general budget. Because basically, this is a moneymaker for the city. You're going to have to do maintenance on second phase, third phase, whatever, out there eventually, whether you want to or not. So this is a way to bring in income. We still have approximately probably $40,000, $50,000 or more in $5,000 increments on engraving to the seats that aren't, aren't finished, and $2,500 allocations for engraving to bring in additional income. So this project's a moneymaker. If you're smart, you'll have somebody do publicity and so on and so forth.
When you say it's a moneymaker, what, what is the cheapest one that you can buy?
$250.
$250. How much does it cost to do the engraving, whatever else we need, including putting the granite in? Tell me where the profit is.
Well, it's in your, it's in, if you look at this- Basically, the 200, each stone has a certain number of names and the certain size of lettering. So the $250 donor, there's like 15 names on that stone, whereas a $1,000 donor has larger lettering and maybe eight names. So, so what happens is, is if you multiply out the donation for each of those stones, it may cost us-
Eight or nine dollars for engraving.
Yeah, eight or nine dollars for engraving. But the total stone, everything, may cost us, let's say it's $50.
Okay.
Okay? And you're going to get for that $50, you know, somewhere around $3,000 or $4,000.
Yeah, I, I want, that's what I needed to say.
So to give you an idea, on Phase II, that's why I was, I was mentioning in the budget, the total cost of everything, which is basically the stones. But you have to support the stones with a reinforced concrete base, and you have a certain amount of demolition. For basically 56 donor tiles, okay, we will, we will generate $267,500 for 56 tiles. Okay? So what that means is, for those 56 tiles, there will be 616 donor names, based on the allocation of the $250 donation, the $500 donation, and the $1,000 donation. So we broke it up with the quantities, and we think this is going to last for several years, this new Phase II, before it's filled up, and then we go on to Phase III or whatever. So.
And the only thing that I would really take any issue with is, is the thought that it's going to take an hour or so a week. If you, if you look at, you know, blackened letter history and city seal and, and all of those things, I, I think it's going to be an, an ongoing basis. I'm not here to argue, I'm just here to point out that it is going to be an ongoing project that is going to take time from a project manager. And it's, it's your decision whether that, that is a council priority or not, given your other priorities. So that's why I'm bringing it forward.
I also think, though, that, that if we are as successful as we've been in the past, there will be revenues there to help, help offset those costs.
And you'll keep us even busier.
Well, I, I think there's a, you know, there's another issue, too, and that is the balance between the various, the supply of the various levels of contribution and the space to put people in. So it seems like we're selling out fairly rapidly on the availability of the low-cost tiles and lagging behind in the filling of the higher-cost tiles. And so I, I think we need to think about that, whether or not we can rebalance the supply of tiles by price point so that we don't wind up building more and more rings for $250 tiles when we got a whole lot of space available for the higher-cost ones. So I, you know, that's, it's just another management issue here that needs to be thought through about how we do that. You may have some thoughts right now about that, but then I, I, the, the second issue is, this is going to be an ongoing thing. We have it. We said we wanted it. We need to take care of it. So with this Phase II, I do think we need to identify a management solution for overall responsibility for this project, and I don't know if it belongs in Public Works, Parks and Recreation, General Services. I don't know. That's for you guys to figure out. But I, 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 it's hard to imagine that it's a full-time position or anything close to that, and so I'm hoping that there's a place to tuck it in. And I, I do think if we do approve this Phase II, really, even if we don't approve this Phase II, we do need to establish program management responsibility for this.
Mr. Mayor, I think those points are very well taken, but one other aspect of this is, is that we're dealing with things here that staff really doesn't have very much knowledge of. And we're talking about the globe, and the globe is already peeling, so now that there needs to be some kind of work done on that, to not only seal it, but to make sure that it remains, you know, the, the turquoise color.
That's already been done. The patina has been repaired by the manufacturer at no cost, and that's completed.
Okay, well, you know-
Proper care of it, proper care of it is important, so.
Well, does it have to be done the way we're doing it? There are times when you have, I mean, it's a city property, but you have city properties where people are very involved in it, and you have a, maybe- where people are very involved in it, and you have maybe a nonprofit or something that does a lot of maintenance and isn't very involved in it. Maybe that would be an approach to consider, of working with the city, but that taking the, if there's this kind of revenue, you might be able to do something like that.
I think there is a potential of the revenue to pay for this extra maintenance or this extra amount of time that staff needs. I think it's difficult on city public property to have people come in and do work or the additional, it has to be done through cities' process of protecting the work and protecting the public. So I think that as far as the management, you still have in place the McFadden Committee who are taking money in, but the issue has to do with how do you actually continue the maintenance of this operation? Everything from the hose down to the working on the patina and varnishing and waxing or whatever has to be done, still has to be done, and someone has to oversee that. And I think it has to be someone in the city staff.
Well, what kind of a resource does this cleaning the patinas and all that?
I'm sorry?
What kind of a resource do you need to perform that technical work?
Steve, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, one of, you know, I guess we could dedicate, you know, some time from one of our project engineers, but I think that's kind of not the best use in Public Works. We have multiple large CIV projects, you know, no offense to the project, but it's not as substantial as some of the other things we're trying to accomplish in this city. I don't know, perhaps there can be some kind of, you know, from another department. You know, one of the thoughts I had was that quite often we do allow, like the Cronin Del Marque bid, they do run various projects within the city under an encroachment agreement type kind of thing. Folks do have, adjacent property owners do have encroachment agreements, and they own and maintain decorative paving in the public right-of-way. So maybe there's a way to set up some kind of an organization that would be responsible to maintain this and improve it and add the tiles under certain conditions and agreements, and as long as the form was agreeable to the city attorney and the, and our liability folks for insurance purposes, and maybe there's a way to do something there where they can essentially be in control of their own destiny and essentially run the operation on public property with proper controls. Of course, we'd have to have some conditions, like when they're allowed to do the work, or maybe perhaps some basic notification to the city of when work needs to occur and have some kind of approval. So, just an idea.
So the decision that's really before us is whether we want to go ahead and budget the 46,500 or 50,000, whatever it is, to seed Phase Two, and then how we want to deal with the future management of this, and as far as future phases as well as the ongoing maintenance.
The big question is whether you want to put that on your checklist. I think we need to have this discussion, and if the answer is yes, well, then we need to figure out, you know, how to manage it.
Well, I would suggest, I like Steve's idea because it was sort of what I was thinking of, just having somebody take over, and so we don't use staff time. This is a little surprising to me because I had never thought of it. Most of this was happening before I was on council, and I don't know, I didn't know it was an ongoing for everything, but I can see why it is now.
Well, I might, there's two choices. The first choice is not to do Phase Two, you get no more income. The second choice is, and you still have the maintenance, you still have everything going on that you do, whether you have Phase Two or not. So that's number one you have to remember. The maintenance, the difference, you bought into that two years ago. So that's done. So that, you know, is over. The advantage to this is that you have income coming in, not out of the general budget, free more or less. You need some PR work once in a while, just a little bit here and there to keep the income coming in, such as a navigator, et cetera. But this helps you pay for maintenance, this helps you pay for engraving, helps you pay for doing Phase Two. So you have two choices. Shut it down the way it is, no more history, no more anything out there, and you still have the maintenance going, or you approve Phase Two, where you have additional income coming in, additional ways to pay for maintenance, additional ways to pay for a Phase Three someday if you want it, because somebody's going to have to replace all those benches that are a mess out there already, so somebody's going to have to pay for that out of the general budget. So you have, those are your choices. It's real simple. That's what it's about.
Councilman Webb.
I'm not sure that I agree that those are the only choices, but I agree with Bernie is that when we decided to allow a centennial monument or recognition or legacy, whatever it was, along with that came the maintenance. And I don't see that we should be necessarily nickel and diming and say it's going to cost us 10,000 more to sweep it, or per year, or whatever. Whatever it takes, we need to do it. It's one of, it's an attraction. It's something that you see people going to in that area and spending time observing and enjoying. As far as the continuing the history, I would question that we need to try to do that every year. I think that maybe in a five-year increment, we say, okay, what happened in the last five years that's significant, and then we go in and we engrave two or three more tiles as far as continuing the history. I agree with that. That needs to be done. That's not a significant amount. Phase Two, it seems like to me that $50,000 is very reasonable, particularly if we can get some sort of income that would go towards maintenance. I'm concerned that we're saying, yeah, we got this wonderful thing out there that commemorates our history, now somebody else take care of it. It's the city's. We need to do that. We can't turn it to somebody else. It's just like we have a street that we paved. We're not going to turn that over to somebody else to maintain. We're going to maintain it. So that I think that this is just one of the things that we accepted when we built this project, as a recognition of our city's history and the ability to continue to recognize the city's history. McFadden, I have a question. How often do you sweep McFadden Square? Just once a week during the summer? Only twice a week? Then why does it cost anything extra to sweep this? If you did it a third time, you had to bring a new crew down. Yes, I guess that that's true, but at any rate, I think that whatever it is, that needs to be rolled into the overall maintenance of the entire McFadden Square area, rather than continually trying to pull out bits and pieces. My thoughts.
I agree with Councilman Webb's comments. Just one aside, it's more than just sweeping. They cordon off the whole area and power wash it in some respect a couple times a week, and that's what the extra cost is associated with it.
It is, though, has been that- We had to do the sidewalks in Balboa Island to create the-
In fact, the plaza sits within the old existing plaza that was being power swept twice a week during the summertime, just like it is now. So there's no additional space. I do believe there will be additional maintenance just because of the character of it and the materials such as the sculpture. But as far as the washing and cleaning, I don't see anything different from what was being done before, before the plaza was ever there. There may be a little bit more, but not much.
Okay. That's not a major issue here, but it seems to me it's highly probable that the seed money that we're talking about here will get recouped by the city over time. You know, there was just an item in the city manager's newsletter about an emergency thing for $2,500 where somebody wanted things in there. So I think it's highly probable the money will get back. I wouldn't mind if we established some sort of fund in relation to this, such that when we get more money than this seed money cost, it goes into a reserved fund, and that money becomes available for extra maintenance or for offsetting of other carrying expenses on the monument. And I do agree that this is a city monument, it ought to be looked after by the city. I don't, I'm not aware if we got any other monuments that are looked after by the city, so we should do that.
One of the things I could do is work with the, whatever it's called, Peninsula Bid or whatever it's called, and work with them on helping in this matter some way, because it's in your area, you know, I can work with you, and there's maybe some ways to relieve some of the pressure. For instance, the engraving and some stuff that, you know, that save a lot of staff time, but it's not necessary to staff to really be involved in it, because I've done most of it the last three years. So, I mean, there's ways that we could cut staff down to a very minimum with maybe this bid. I mean, I know, you know, the bid chairman, and that may be some ideas that you had that would cut down some of the staff time possibly. And there could be a contract, not the whole thing, but certain items or something.
And one other thing is perhaps we need to have hanging around some of the seats some whisk brooms. If somebody objects to sand filling in their name, they can take the whisk broom and whisk broom it out.
Will you carry your own personal broom?
They'd probably be gone about the first week at somebody's home.
I just want to say one thing, is I, my office is very close. I visit that plaza all the time, and there isn't ever a time that I've been there that has been a child, or a mother and a child, or other people who are visiting, walking that labyrinth and seeing what the city's all about and its history. So I think it's a very interactive space, interactive to the public, to the residents and everybody. So to me, it's a very successful thing, not only financially.
Well, one thing is I've been approached by both sides of staff and Bernie and Ray's side on this issue and working with our staff, and it seems that we need to, if we're going to do this, we need to have one person in the staff that is a designated hitter, for lack of a better term, to deal with this. And I have no idea, you know, where it should come from, where it should come out of Public Works or-
It's a point to take, Joe, the city manager.
Understand. We will do that, and we'll explore some options here. I think the key thing is that it will go on the checklist, so I think that is probably a good point to leave it.
I like Councilman Henn's idea that we can kind of establish some sort of fund so that the city will be reimbursed. Because I know with some of the other things, the Centennial, it got a little bit loose.
Well, we have a fund, I mean, a separate item already on the budget, I mean, on the books. And that fund, that item can still remain there, all the money can go in there, and the council, probably, some of the pushback with maintenance is that they are nervous, you know, because their budgets, they're pushed on their budgets. I think you need to allocate some type of, make sure their department has the budget for this, because they've talked to me and they're nervous, they don't have enough money to do this and that and so on and so forth, but you're on budget, so I think at this, sometime on this budget session, you should allocate, and you can have it in that, you know, in the Centennial budget aspect, but some cleaning or something, however you want to handle that, so that they're not nervous and have a heart attack every time they have to go out and clean or do something. So I think that would be important.
And that will help a lot, doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think that concludes the items, whoops, excuse me, Dennis says. Sure, Dennis.
I have another few items that I just want to mention as well before we're done.
I just wanted to conclude, at least our part, staff's part of this. Tonight, you're having two public hearings. You're going to have a hearing on your appropriation limit, which was required by Proposition 13B, I think it was. But then you're also going to have a public hearing on your proposed budget for the new fiscal year. I passed out, I have copies in the back for the public. This is your budget checklist. You normally don't even see this until, we discuss it, but you don't normally see it until the second meeting in June, when we're adopting the budget. Because funds are tight this year, the city manager wanted me to get it out ahead of time. These are the items that, this first page, it's a three-page document, the second and third page refer to the rebudgets, the capital improvement program rebudgets, which is not new money, it's just money that's being carried over from one fiscal year. But on the first page of this is the money that's been requested by community organizations, some by city staff. Example would be the McFadden Square Phase Two. So you'll notice at the very bottom, under supplemental expenditure budget requests by fund, we've got general fund requests totaling so far this year, 577,400. Neighborhood enhancement, which I didn't have a chance to talk to Councilman Rosansky, but that's for West Newport Park. And then we've got some other funds that are for capital projects. So again, 577,400 requested so far in general fund additions. You can talk about this tonight, you can wait till the second meeting in June to talk about it, but I wanted you to have the information ahead of time. That's what I wanted to say.
I'm going to just pass that under item 19 tonight early.
Certainly your prerogative. Typically, at the public hearing, the public will make comments about the budget and will receive further direction from council.
And then you go through it, right before you adopt the budget, as to which will be included in the budget and which will not.
You'll be typically voting on each individual item at the second meeting in June.
Yeah, but tonight would be our first opportunity to publicly discuss the items that are on the checklist.
As you see fit.
Councilman Henn.
Okay. I would request that we add for checklist discussion a few small items here. The first would be the Balboa Village Palm Tree Replacement Matching Fund Program, where the residents are raising half the money and the city would be spotting half the money. They've actually raised half the money for the first phases of that program, and so we're going to need $15,000 of matching money. I think that's pretty worthwhile, given the resident effort there. Then the Economic Development Committee has, we'll be discussing this later this evening, but the plan that the committee has approved and has forwarded to council for consideration would require an additional $15,000 of money for various studies and support programs to make that come true. And then we talked about the memorial, the McFadden Centennial Memorial, so that ought to go on the list someplace. And lastly, we did defer out of the current year budget, the West Balboa Median Project. This would be funding for design-only, such that we can be, in effect, shovel-ready to put in the budget, the money to do the work at some point in the future. But I understand from Dave Webb that a reasonable estimate for design-only for that would be $60,000. Is that correct, Dave? In that range? Okay. So if you can add those to the list for consideration, I would appreciate it.
Councilman Webb.
I was going to mention this tonight in our discussion, but there's one item of addition that I liked, and one item that I'd like to have kind of added to the description of a project. The first is, we went through a fairly significant initial planning program on the Mariners Mile Boardwalk Study, and it's kind of lost a little bit of steam, but in order for us to be able to begin to implement it, it's going to be necessary for us to work with the Corps of Engineers to adjust the pierhead lines. And that may require some additional initial studies, as well as, I don't know if it requires an environmental document or not, but I think that we need to continue that program. I've talked to Mr. Batum and don't have a really good figure for what that should be, but so I'm going to suggest $100,000 be added. I don't know if that's too much or too little.
You probably know more than I do at this point.
And then the other item is that the Mariners Mile Businessmen Association had sent a letter to us requesting that some additional planning be done for, let's call it, traffic calming measures in the Mariners Mile area along Avon Street and Riverside. And so that, I noticed that in the budget, there are some paving that is being done on Tustin, Avon, Ocean View, and Riverside. So that if we're going to do traffic calming, it would be best to do that prior to doing the new paving, or probably with the paving project. And so that I'd like to have some of the funds in the traffic calming measure be designated to putting together the design- designated to putting together the design and, and provide for the improvements at the Mariners Mile Businessmen Association. I'm assuming that this is based on what they've told me, it's probably going to be some paving, favors at the intersection of Avon and Riverside and Avon and, and Tustin. And so that, but at any rate, I'd like to have that in the description for the traffic calming measures. I'm not asking for additional money right now, because I think that there's sufficient funds in there. But the other would be the hundred thousand dollars for Mariners Mile. And this evening, I will discuss where fifty thousand of that might be able to come from.
Councilman Rosansky, did you have something?
Just clarification. On the Newport Terrace landfill gas control system, we have it here as a sup, like a supplemental expenditure. But I mean, we're legally required to do that per a legal settlement, so is there an issue over that?
No, it's under the Environmental Liability Fund. It's listed on the checklist at eighty thousand there at the bottom of the page.
So it's, I mean, it's not really a wish list thing, I mean, it's something we are legally required to do at this point.
That's correct, but it's not in the budget, so this is a way of us getting into the budget.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
This is a checklist, Mr. Rosansky?
Sorry?
This is a checklist, not that are the words you used.
Oh, sorry.
Whatever.
I just, I had a similar.
In the past, it's been a wish list, I don't know about a checklist.
I had a similar comment of wondering why the maintenance for Coastal Peak Park is a checklist item. I would have thought that would have been, we've known about that park coming online for a long time. I was just wondering why it wasn't embedded in the budget, was it just an oversight?
It was, it was just an oversight, that's right. We thought it was in there, we talked about it, and it wasn't.
Oh, I had a couple items.
Dave?
I know, you were wondering why. A couple things, you know, the prospect of losing gas tax, that's really worrisome. And we do have some funds, the Sholi Fund, that we got from airport business area mitigation lawsuit, I think about four hundred thousand dollars. So maybe, there might be a way to shift that around if we were to somehow put that on Phase Two and Three Signal Synchronization and then free up funds for the later phases. But that is a pot of money that would maybe make things a little bit more fluid. And then on Bristol, which is currently that dirt, if we can maybe explore an interim fix, you know, something less elaborate than, you know, full-blown landscaping. And I'd like to work with General Services, so for purposes of this evening, just a placeholder of Bristol and see what I can do to fill in the blank and make it reasonable. And if it's not, then we'll delete it.
Do you have a number in mind?
You?
Picking over.
We'd be able to bring that back at the next meeting then.
Okay, Councilman Curry, did you get your question answered?
Okay, let me ask my question, fine.
Okay, Councilman Gardner, anything? Okay?
I've already encroached on the city attorney's subject matter time here, but before we conclude the budget review, I don't have any other items that I intended to bring forward to the city council. So I guess my quest, the question to you is, do you want any other budgeted items reviewed with you at the next study session?
I don't know if it would be at the study session, but I would find it so helpful, and I think many of our residents would, if we could get something that says, this is about City Hall and Civic Center, this is what was bid, and these are the things that have changed. Because I get lots of questions and I'm not on that committee, so it's hard for me to answer them. And it's so we can really see, it's, oh, are we suddenly paving the streets with gold? No, we are doing whatever. So a real fairly detailed comparison of where we started and, and where we're ending up would be helpful, I think.
I think that's dangerous at this point, because we, we don't know where we're going to end up, you know?
Well, there must be some way to explain to people the difference between what we bid for the contest and what, where we're suddenly, we're suddenly, I mean, twice as, we, we had architects come in and we said, this is what we want the project to cost. And now we are well above that. And I know we don't have, I don't mean, oh, we're paving, we're going to have granite counters instead of Formikers, I don't mean that sort of thing. But I mean, the park was here, now the park is here because we think we're adding this. The City Hall building was here, now it's here because we've expanded it or we're having to reduce, dig into the ground for the sale. I mean, just that sort of thing, we're adding the library. So we could just, in big blocks, and with understanding it's going to change. But as I say, I'm, I get questions all the time and I'm sort of saying, well, what's the Civic Center now, we're adding this? But I don't have really good information to, to explain it, and I think people would be interested.
Yeah, we should give it a try.
I would, I would make as, what I hope is a helpful suggestion here, at some point, we're going to have a fifty percent design checkpoint here, right? So maybe sometime following, with the point we get to the fifty percent define, design level, we can.
You know, there's a lot of things going on, there's a lot of value engineering analysis, there's a lot of different things in play, so I think that's kind of why this thing, the word gets out that it's this or it's that. And really, it's none of those, because nothing's been decided, just a lot of things that are being analyzed.
Yeah.
Or maybe we just explain that.
Well, and what I was going to say is, because I'm, I'm sensitive to what Homer just said about, I mean, you, there's lots of numbers flying around, and I've even gotten concerned about some of the numbers I've been hearing. But at the end of the day, we're not finished. And maybe what you're looking for more is a comparison of what the projects are as opposed to putting numbers to those things.
Yes, that really is more.
Like, just as, for instance, now we've increased, or we're proposing to increase the library by X amount of square feet, which was not part of the original bid. And, you know, we have a, a bridge that might cross San Miguel, which was really not part of the original thing, but may improve traffic and solve other problems. So it has expanded, and we're looking to solve additional problems, and maybe that's more what you're looking for, as opposed to telling you exactly what everything's going to cost, because we really don't know.
Right, no, I understand that, that would be perfect.
Yeah.
An explanation rather than the.
Yes, I didn't phrase it very well.
Okay, well, before you get started, Mr. City Attorney, I just have to ask this question, does anyone want to speak on the budget? Okay, seeing no one. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two matters that are before you in study session. At the request of Councilmember Curry, he asked that we take a look at campaign contribution limits as well as a potential loophole or a loophole in the term limits set forth in the charter. In a brief summarization, you are entitled to increase your campaign contribution limits, we've reviewed that, we've made a proposal to you for consideration, you can give us direction. You can raise it to the one thousand dollar level discussed by Councilmember Curry, and you can put in a CPI adjustment if that's your direction. As to term limits, you can address that issue as well, it can be addressed in a number of different ways. One could be a charter amendment, another can be a clarifying ordinance. You can clarify charters through ordinance as long as you do not change the substance of the charter. We're here tonight before you to get your direction, so we can bring back final documents for your consideration, ultimate adoption, if that's your desire. So please give us your comments if you wish.
Mayor for Tim Curry?
Thank you. I brought this forward because, as, you know, all of us are aware, in, in the three years that I've been on the city council, postage rates have gone up three times. Our, our original contribution limit was set in nineteen ninety-five, and it costs a lot more to run campaigns these days. I had about three hundred and forty individual contributors, that may be a record for money raised by people other than yourself and in the city, but that only amounted to about a hundred thousand dollars. And so what we're having is a situation where it's becoming more and more difficult during the course of a campaign to communicate to the voters based on these limits and based on the restrictions on raising money. In addition, in this last election cycle, we saw efforts by two different groups, two different individuals, really, to put money into an individual expenditure campaign. And that, in one case, was more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, in the other case, it approached eighty thousand dollars, or exceeded eighty thousand dollars. So what we want to have is a campaign legal framework that enables people as much as possible to play within the rules of disclosed contributions and raising money from other people. If you look at what other cities in Orange County have, nearly, the great majority of the cities have no limits whatsoever. Given the, the cost increases in postage and campaign costs, I believe it's appropriate for us to consider raising our campaign limit and indexing it for inflation. I think the way that's, it's proposed here, that the city clerk would automatically simply make the adjustment and posted is fine, I don't think it needs to come back for a hearing or anything like that. So I would suggest to my colleagues that we direct the city attorney to bring forward the ordinance that he's, he's provided here. And maybe I should stop here and talk about term limits separately, if there's any questions on campaigns.
Councilman Gardner?
We've had this conversation, I'm very uncomfortable with this, but I'm uncomfortable with the money that we're spending on city council campaigns. I think people wonder what, why it costs so much, because they haven't had to do the kind of mailings. But I did have a question, and I know I had asked it of you, David, at one point, and that San Jose had passed an ordinance that limited what you could spend on an independent expenditure committee to what you could contribute to an individual. And I wondered if they had had a ruling on that yet.
There's, there's not been a ruling with respect to the San Jose ordinance. There are troublesome issues regarding expenditures, they can be limited in certain times, and independent campaign areas are an area that seems subject to it.
That we could control them more than we do?
Potentially. But it does get problematic on how you define those limitations based upon First Amendment considerations.
Because I think, you know, when you start getting into the free speech, what you also could have is a self-funder, you know, someone that could conceivably put up two hundred thousand dollars of their own money. You wouldn't be able to restrict that.
You, you cannot restrict self-funding.
All right. But, but my concern has been, and I understand that, but I mean, if I, for some reason, want to put all my money in because I just have to be on the city council, everybody knows where that money's coming from. The problem with independent expenditure, expenditure campaigns is they are often named so artfully, you know, it's, it's like when Chevron comes off with its green whatever, and we're thinking, well, Chevron really green, but, so you don't know where it's coming from unless you're very knowledgeable and know where to look. So it is, it can be very misleading. And so I, I would put them in a different, put that in a different category than, than the self-funder. And I would just, we don't have to do it now, but I wish we would look into that, because that did seem to tilt the whole schmear.
We can do that and bring that, some analysis back.
Okay, Councilman Rosansky?
I would, I, and I understand Councilwoman Gardner's concerns certainly with regard to elections getting out of control, but I, I think I would support Councilman Curry in increasing the, the limits here. I mean, if you do look at this list here, there's only about four cities that have lower limits than we do, and most of them are fairly small cities. Everything, the cost of everything's gone up. And, you know, just to send out a citywide mailer is fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. And so, you know, the, the campaign contributions that we can accept now just don't really go that far. Cities grown, we have more residents, we have more people to, to touch at the election time, so I would support that.
Councilman Henn?
I, I would support this too. I was particularly struck by the list of cities that have no limits whatsoever. And so it seems to me the establishment of a one thousand dollar limit still squarely places us in the more conservative end of the realm here in terms of limiting fundraising. And beyond that, it is expensive to run a campaign. So I'm in support of it, and I think changing the amount, just for simplicity's sake, changing the amount once every two years, roughly following the conclusion of an election, so that everybody knows for the next election, for a long time in advance, what's the limit? And I'd round it to the nearest hundred dollars instead of ten dollars, just to make it easy to stick in your mind, what's the number.
Okay, Councilman Diggle?
Yeah, that's fine, I support it. But I think I hold the record.
Okay, I think you got your direction on that part of it.
Yes, sir, I do. Then there's the issue with respect to the term limits.
On the term limits issue, this is something that I sort of discovered by happenstance. If you read the city ordinance, city charter, it basically says that you can serve two full four-year terms and you have to sit out a term. I went back and read the ballot arguments from the nineteen ninety-two election, where by eighty-two percent, the voters passed term limits. So that would seem to be pretty clear. But we have lawyers, and so it's not clear. And the issue arose because John Heffernan, John had been elected to a full four-year term in two thousand, he'd been elected to a second, a full term in two thousand and four, and was considering being a candidate in two thousand and eight. That would have been a third consecutive four-year term. And in talking to the city attorney, who then talked with outside council, we found that in fact, that there was ambiguity about that. That because of a court case in San Diego where a person had stepped off, somebody had been elected to secede them, they died, and then he was being reappointed, that there was ambiguity about whether or not it really meant you had to stay off for, for a term, and what a term was, and we did not have specific definitions in our ordinance about what that was. Now, let me say for the record, I didn't bring it up at the time, because it's, the advice from the lawyer was, let them file for office, take their papers, and then sue them in court and see whether or not they're a viable candidate. Well, that's not a way to resolve ambiguities in our election law. We need to be clear up front for people what they are. And for the record, John certainly would be a knowledgeable candidate in two thousand and twelve, should he wish to run. So let make it very clear that this doesn't affect anybody as it relates to my district. So what I would propose that we do is adopt an ordinance that defines what terms are, both for purposes of the term limit, as being the two four-year terms, which I think are clearly anticipated in the ordinance, and says that to be a candidate, again, you sit out a four-year term. And I think if we do that, we accomplish the purposes, because in John's case, he had resigned three years, you know, before his term was up. But the principle that was contained in the, in the legal advice we got would have allowed somebody to resign three weeks before an election. In fact, if you really wanted to be nefarious, you could resign during the closing period, file for office again, and then be reappointed by your colleagues within the twenty-nine day window. And that's clearly not anything that anybody intended when they passed by eighty-two percent term limits in our city. So that's the hall that we're going to hopefully plug with, with this ordinance.
All right, so you're, you're not looking to prevent anybody from running again once a four-year term is expired, because there was some information in the staff report to that, or suggestion of maybe doing that?
No, and if you look at the legislative history of, of when this was passed by the voters, the, the affirmative side, John Hedges and Gene Watt, who actually signed the ballot arguments, it's very clear you can run again after you've sat out a term. The issue is what is a term, so already finding the term is being four years.
I have a question for the city attorney. Before we wade into these waters, do you see any complexities that, or intricacies that we need to be aware of that could kind of be a problem down the line?
Not on this issue. I, I see this as being something that's straightforward, it's best to deal with it affirmatively, in my opinion. I agree with Councilmember Curry, you don't want to have an ambiguity and then have to face it in a courtroom. That's the place you want to stay out of, if you can.
And how are we dealing with the situation, which I think three or four of us were in, where you were appointed and then I've run for now two full terms? That's not going to affect that, what you're contemplating?
It would not affect what we're talking about. What we're talking about would not affect that.
I'd just like to clear the air, I do not intend to resign, and I do not intend to try to run again next time.
That's right. Yeah, maybe I should vote against this, I don't know. I'd be on council when this.
I just wonder if this is overkill, like, I mean, I, I don't have a strong feeling against one way or the other, but I just, I just wonder if it just isn't overkill, just creating another ordinance and.
I think it's good to clarify.
Well, I don't have a problem so much with, but there is one, I guess, instance where I guess I have a little concern. Let's say you have, I'll take me for instance on it, just because I don't want to take anybody else here. Let's say, okay, I finish my two years, well, here, this is a perfect example, the, my predecessor, well, he, well, let's not use my predecessor, that would be a bad example. Let's say that there, I've served my two terms, someone else is elected to the position, for whatever reason, they can't finish the term. And so now it's up to the council to a point, that's how we do it, or we have a special election. You know, I could see instances where, you know, the council might want, it's a short six months or a year left, they want to put someone in the office so that the seat is not empty, but maybe not give someone an advantage over the next person who's going to, you know, run for election. And a former councilman might be an ideal person to fulfill that commitment. And that would be prevented here or not?
It depends on the direction you give us tonight. It depends, if we say that you have to sit out one full term, then yes, that would be prevented. If we define it differently, specifically saying you can't, in terms of consecutive terms, it wouldn't be ruled out. Consecutive full terms, because then if it's two full consecutive terms, you're off, you're off for three years, you get appointed, that's not two, that's not a third consecutive term, full term. So it really depends on how you want us to define.
Well, I'd, I'd like some consideration for that, and maybe we even limit whoever's appointed to just fulfilling the term and can't run for the seat, so they don't get an advantage. But I, I think that there's an advantage in having the experience of a former council member, if the council so chooses to fill the seat, because, you know, I mean, it takes time to get up to speed, you know, there's no point in putting someone there who's just going to be, you know, a chair warmer, so.
That would be the caretaker provision.
With the proviso that you couldn't stand again for a third consecutive term, I would, I would not object to that.
Let me throw in one more option, let's say somebody moves to a different district, which would have an election two years after they have completed their term, they haven't sat. They haven't set out for a full term, but they're now in a different district in a different cycle. Should that person be allowed to run?
They may be prohibited by the charter already.
I think they are.
The concern is under the charter and its actual term limits that were adopted, that the contemplation was sitting out a term, a full term. I don't know what would make a difference to actually change district and be in a reduced cycle.
Different cycle, yeah.
It doesn't say any particular district.
Right. Well, I know that, it doesn't, but I was just curious about, are we already prohibited from changing districts and running two years later, after, I mean, assuming that you're changing the cycle?
Well, that we probably wouldn't be prohibited. Is it two consecutive?
It says two consecutive four-year terms.
Okay, so that's not, a new term in another district wouldn't be a consecutive term, I wouldn't think, or?
Mr. Mayor, if I may suggest, you know, we might want to put this on the study session and still have it on the agenda also, and see how far we get, but I'm a little concerned about our time available for a closed session.
This doesn't have to be done now.
Yeah, I mean, it's, he can get working on it, but-
I think you got direction on the campaign contribution thing, and then if you want to work on this, you want to bring it back and stay-
Yeah.
Yeah, bring back that.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay. Anyone from the public want to comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Ron Hendrickson, resident of the Port Streets. Yeah, quickly, I may read this, because there's quite a bit of stuff here, and I may run out of time, but to talk about the increase in the campaign contributions. If you're going to tinker with our election laws to increase the allowed contribution from 500 to 1,000, who benefits? I don't think the electorate does. I know you people up here, you know, you're concerned about the elections, and more money's better than less money, but I think when we're looking at the possibility of trying to encourage citizens to run for public office, all you're doing by doing this is just closing out more people who would say, I don't want to touch it, you know, it's just too darn expensive, and I think that's really unfortunate. Costa Mesa has kind of an interesting, they weren't listed in the list of what their limits are, but there is a limit in Costa Mesa. However, there's a conflict of interest law that says that if you contribute 250 or more to a candidate, if you're promoting some kind of an issue, that candidate has to take himself out from the vote. He has to, what's the term I want to use?
Recuse.
Yeah, recuse. The candidate has to recuse himself, because they are so concerned about conflict of interest. I thought that was something, not that Newport Beach is going to do that, but something that ought to be thought about, because of doubling the amount of this contribution. So anyway, I think, I think I've covered this well enough then. So I recommend that we keep the current $500 limit and not double it. With regard to the charter amendment to modify the term limits, I think that modifying the charter to preclude a scoundrel from resigning before the end of his or her final four-year term, and then running for another four-year term, I think we've got a pretty smart electorate. I, you know, this has not happened in all these years, and I think it's a lot to do about nothing, is my concern. What I think we really ought to be doing is taking a look at a charter amendment that would deal with filling vacancies by appointment. And I think that we have a real problem in really complying with the intent of the original term limit charter amendment, in that currently, council people can serve up to three terms, 12 years, because of the appointment process. You know, why don't we change that, and instead of the council appointing, when there's a vacancy, the council then, if we have to have a special election, if it's too far away from a general election, so be it. And I think the people ought to be the ones that ought to decide who the new council person ought to be. And if a person were elected to fill a partial term after completion of it, they could serve an additional four-year term, and therefore, their total service would be under the two four-year terms, which I think is the intent of the charter, and the 92 charter amendment. So I think you could think about this and work it out, and I think you'd be doing a service to the public if we made it an elective process to replace a council person who has resigned, or for whatever reason, is no longer serving. So anyway, I leave you with those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session.
Leslie, I did my calculation again.